I would like to call the meeting to order for Tuesday, September 20th at 6:00 PM. Could I have a roll call, please?
Teresa Morris, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, present. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'd like to announce that the meeting is being recorded on Zoom. It's also live on Channel 9 and it will be posted on the YouTube channel in the future. Chairman's additions or deletions. I don't have any additions or deletions, but I do want people to note the ordering of the meeting at 6:05, we have a hearing for the one day liquor license. At 6:15, we will be going to Section 4.6, which is a discussion of the next steps for the conservation restriction and habitat maintenance at Squawick Meadows. At 6:30, we have Mike Crowley here with us to discuss MBTA communities. So the ordering of the meeting will be 2.1, 4.6, and 4.2, just so people are aware of that. So now that I've said that, Chaz or Teresa, do either of you have anything to add to the meeting or Eric? No?
I do not.
Then moving on to the public comment period. This is 1.5. I just wanted, I am making a public comment. I was asked to announce that Truckapalooza is this coming weekend, the 24th. And let me see if I have this. There are some, there, there is a flyer that was on the website. You might have to scroll down to get to it under news. And it's, in addition to being Truckapalooza, it's also a craft fair and a toy sale. It's September 24th from 10:00 to 2:00 PM. And no horn time is from 1:00 to 2:00. So if you have someone who the horns scares a child or whatever, the time to come is in the afternoon, 1:00 to 2:00. And this is to benefit the friends of the Townsend Public Library. So that is my announcement. So any other public comments?
I show nothing.
All right. Next item is to review and approve the meetings for 7/20/2021, which was a year ago, and 8/23/2022. So Teresa and Chaz, do you guys have any comments on the minutes?
I do not.
Yeah, neither I do not. I'm okay with it.
Okay, so could I have a motion then to, nor do I, I should say. So do I have a motion to accept the minutes for these two days?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes for the two dates mentioned.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further comments? Others in favor?
Teresa Morris.
Chaz Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yeah. And I should just mention, we'll be doing roll call events tonight, but we usually do that anyways. We're all good. All right, 6:05, the application for a one day liquor license. So this is for Tavern 13, and it is for an event in October, October 29th, the Small Business Spooktacular. That's on the premises of Evans on the Common. So this was in your packet. There are conditions on page two. Do you want me to read those? Are we good? The, there is a list of places where the applicant can purchase liquor for this event. And I hope it was an application.
Yes, there was. Date of event, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, I've got it. The effect, the date of the event is 10/29/2022. The licensee is Tavern 13, and it looks like Wyatt from Tavern 13 is on. So Wyatt, if you don't mind, could you put your camera on as well, please? Since you're participating in the meeting.
Yes, yes, I believe Amanda should be on as well.
I'm hoping.
Yes, Amanda Morrison, Wyatt Lafferty.
Sorry, I'm driving, that's why I have my, my camera.
I don't see Amanda, do you?
Yes, on the application, it is Tavern 13 LLC, Amanda Morse and Wyatt Lafferty.
Okay, so we have Wyatt.
Yes.
And the hours of sale are from 10:00 to 2:00. It's wine and malt beverages only, and it is a for-profit corporation. That is a problem. So the license and the conditions were in there. I guess the, I'm gonna read the conditions. The one thing that I would like the board to discuss is, if you look at the application, it says police detail required, and it's marked no. But it says please consult with licensing agent. So I'd like to discuss that somewhat. But let me read the conditions that are on the license. Number one, one license has been issued for the above-named licensee for use of the Small Business Spooktacular on the premises of Evans on the Common, 18 Highland Street, on 10/29 from 10:00 to 2:00, and is to be secured so that alcohol is confined to the license area, which means that it should only be on the grounds of Evans on the Common. The licensee must stock alcoholic beverages within the licensed area. The licensee must purchase alcohol from a wholesale importer manufacturer, meaning the licensee cannot purchase from a package store under a Section 14 license. And the list of authorized sources for the one day license is attached to this. Attendees cannot travel with alcoholic beverages outside the license-secured area. So all drinks must remain in the Evans on the Common area, the area that's designated for the event. The licensee is responsible, whether present or not, for ensuring that no disorder, disturbance, or illegality takes place in or on a licensed premises. And the license is responsible, license C is responsible, whether present or not, for enforcing the serving capacity of no more than 100 guests. So is there a motion? Should we discuss first, or should we make a motion?
I'll do the motion, Teresa, if you.
Teresa, you're muted. Chaz, go ahead with the motion.
I move that we approve the one day special license application for Tavern 13 LLC for 10/28/2029, 10/29/2022, between the hours of 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM, with the special conditions as read.
All right. So what I'd like to discuss is whether or not the board thinks it's necessary to have a detail for crossing the road, given that the the condition is that anything consumed must be on premises. And the licensee is responsible for making sure that things stay within that area.
Within the boundaries. Well, Madam Chair, I did do a little, when you are tip certified, which they have the certifications here, that is part of the certification, is to make sure that you're within the parameters of whatever function that you're doing. So I would like to know just the amount of people that are there. It's who is gonna be actually attending? Is there gonna be a bartender and someone else? Is there gonna be, you know, two or three people? If you could answer that for me, Wyatt, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, so it'll be me and Amanda. We are both the owners, and we will also both be the bartenders.
Okay. And how are we policing the, the area in which they're gonna be consuming the beverages?
I didn't, I wasn't aware if we were responsible for setting up a boundary area or if that was set up by the function itself. I didn't get really any paperwork on that.
Eric, what do you, what's the usual on that?
And I have a question on what we're talking about, the boundaries. Eric Fowler, you go first.
Well, no, I, I was just gonna say, you know, we, we, I think the, the board is the licensing authority can, if, if, if the board feels there needs to be appropriate boundaries, you put them in the license, and then the licensee can have a conversation between whether they're gonna be responsible for putting up the boundaries or the, the entity that's having is be responsible, but that, that needs to happen. That's a kind of a private issue between them. But we can absolutely condition the license on having appropriate boundaries, you know, established so that there's no crossing or leaving a particular area that's where the service is happening.
So is it, is it stated, Wyatt, that this is gonna be outside in Evans under the tent? Or is this an inside venue?
I'm under the impression it's gonna be outside under the tent.
So that, as you know, that boundary goes right into the street area, the town, you know, right across the town. So I would like to see some, I personally would like to see, you know, some concerns of how far that spreads into the town center.
Okay. So would we, are you saying that we should add an additional condition that there has to be defined boundary for where the consumption of the alcoholic beverages are, Teresa?
Yeah, I'd like to see, he has a very large tented area out there. I'd like to see that the boundaries must stay within, you know, the tented, tented area and not out, spreading out into the parking lot, into the town common, et cetera.
So then can we add a condition number eight that said the licensed area is within the bounds of the Evans on the Common, either tent or parking area? What, what do you wanna, can we do that, Eric? Does that make sense?
Is that gonna restrict you, Wyatt, too much?
I can't say for certain, because I don't know what else they're setting up exactly underneath the tent. I, I would have to find that out. I, I fully agree that, you know, drinks, you know, anybody who gets a drink shouldn't just be able to take it anywhere they want. But I can't speak as to the boundaries of the tent and what's gonna be within that tent.
I, I think we can just say it's the, the tented area or the
Or the defined, defined area.
Is the defined area of the event.
Right.
How does that sound?
Yeah, the defined, yeah, the tented area, the defined, how about like the dining area? Like, I'm sure they have it set up to where people are gonna sit and eat.
Right. So, which may not be under the tent. It might be that it's over on the side or something.
Correct, so it feels like a dining area or however we wanted to define it, basically under the tent or a dining area where people are seated and having drinks, not, not necessarily walking around, you know, the town.
Well, yeah, we don't want them, I guess, walking across the street onto the common and, you know, we end up with a big party on the common. So the license
Quite the event, my case.
So I'm just, I'm writing here, the licensed area is the defined area of the event. Does that make sense, Eric?
Yeah, I think if, if, you know, and I, and perhaps saying no alcoholic beverages shall be taken outside of that area.
Yeah.
Just put that in there, and then Wyatt will know that like that's the area. And it's up to him, if he sees somebody trying to walk over to the common and say, hey, you gotta keep it.
Well, I'll, I'll probably set up signs, have some laminated signs set up, no drinking beyond this point, and then we'll obviously also pay attention. Because there is gonna be two of us, there isn't just gonna be one person there, so.
But I think just putting that condition, as long as Wyatt understands that, I think that's fine.
Yeah.
All right, so this might be another sentence under number four. Attendees cannot travel with alcoholic beverages outside the licensed-secured area. So I'm, I'm saying the licensed-secured area is the area defined, the defined area of the event is what I have. But there might be better words for it. But Wyatt, you understand what we mean, so.
Yes, I do.
All right, so back to the police detail. I, I wouldn't, I, I think maybe it's the, the event itself, that it might be good to have someone, because where are people gonna park? Along School Street and the parking lot for the common? Are we gonna have, is someone gonna be helping people cross there? Is what I'm concerned about. And it's more the event, I think, than for the license that I have a concern.
But would it be, I mean, this is like a subcontractor finishing, and this would be an Evans question.
That, that is an Evans question. So is there a permit, Eric, for the event itself?
I'm not, I'm not familiar with one. They're having it on their own property. Generally speaking, the only permit that they're required to get from us is, is the alcohol beverage service license, so.
Could we have, could you, could we have you, Eric, have a courtesy call to them just to let them know that, you know, that's something that we talked about?
Sure, that they need to contemplate getting a, a, a detail officer, given the service of alcoholic beverages and the, the fact that they're gonna be parking in various locations around town, at least for the time when they expected that to, to wrap up.
Yeah, between 10:00 and 2:00.
Yeah.
I, I will, I can give Evans a call.
Okay, thank you. All right. So the motion is on the floor. We've added one additional sentence to the conditions, and that's it. So anything else, any further discussion on that?
No, I just want to throw out there that we do have the appropriate insurance that's involved as well, so we, we're good to go.
So Wyatt, do you have anything else for us?
Uh, no, I believe we, we've covered it, covered everything.
All right, so it's, it's, are we ready to vote then? All right, so roll call both, please, Teresa. You have to unmute. Or maybe we can do this.
Teresa Morris, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yeah. Thank you very much. All right, at this point, we have people on the line.
Thank you, Wyatt.
Thank you, Wyatt, and
Thank you.
Sign this, you'll need to come in and pick it up from Sabrina.
Okay.
We're moving down. Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good day.
Madam Chair, do we have the common dictler as well?
We do, but I don't know if we have anybody on the line for that. Do we have anybody present for the common binos license? I have people here for the 6:15 appointment, so I'm gonna go to that and come back unless there's someone online for the, the common license. We'll come back for that one. All right. Moving down to 4.6. This is a discussion of the next steps for the conservation restriction and habitat maintenance requests at Squawick Meadows. I don't wanna dive into this too deeply. What I'm looking for here from the Board of Selectmen are two motions. One is for the Board of Selectmen to permit habitat maintenance on the property. The second is to appoint Emily Fine as the representative for the town for the purposes of applying for the license, as she is the permit holder for that property. And, and so I think I wanna cover those first, and then we'll come back and just talk briefly about the CR. There is a meeting, a working meeting scheduled for 9:30 on Friday morning to discuss this with the stakeholders, and people who are involved in that have received the information for that. So is there a motion first to permit the, the town, as we are the property owners, to permit habitat maintenance on the Squawick Meadows property?
I'll make a motion that we permit habitat maintenance on the benefit property.
And is there a second?
A second.
All right. It was open for discussion, so are there any comments on allowing the property to be maintained?
So I need to understand, when we say the property is being maintained, it's, who, who is it being maintained by?
It's, it's being maintained by the, okay, so there is endangered species habitat on that property. And Emily Fine, who is present here, holds the permit by the state to see that those species are protected. And so the habitat, we also have Janice Gates here, who is in TESA and has met with DEP about the property with NHESP, the Natural Heritage Endangered Species Program. And so they have both met with DEP on this. So the work would be done by volunteers under the direction of the permit holder and DEP, pretty much. Natural heritage, yeah, NHESP. Does that answer the question for you, Teresa?
Yeah, I guess so.
We are the owners of the property, and as such, if there is work that isn't being done personally by the town, we need to allow the, the maintenance to happen.
Right, but I'm just, I just need help understanding it. I'm not against it, but, you know, I have wetlands on my property where there was a landing turtle, which is a protected species. So that, I thought, was maintained by the town.
On your property? Not unless you've given permission to the town to do it.
I thought it was under the wetland protection act.
Jessica, maybe I'm gonna hand this off to you, our conservation agent, who is on the call as well.
Gosh, hot seat.
Sorry, Jessica.
No, I mean, Teresa and for anybody else, too. You know, your, your property is your property, Conservation Commission and the, the Department of Environmental Protection have jurisdiction over what activities, like, like ground disturbing or land disturbing or water disturbing activities might occur within your wetlands or your streams or within their respective protective buffers. But that's just active work happening. Otherwise, we, you know, we as the town, as the state, people who aren't property owners do not access private property to do any work in wetlands or other protected areas.
Okay, so now I understand what they mean by maintaining. I thought they meant maintaining the security. So like, I'm not supposed to use certain things, and I'm not supposed to cut, you know, cut down all the trees and things like that. That's what I thought they meant by maintaining. But now, and now I, I get it, now I understand, thank you.
Okay, so are we ready to vote on allowing habitat maintenance to occur on the property for endangered species protection, I guess? Or to maintain the habitat, to allow the species to continue to propagate? So is there a
As long as somebody knows what's that mean, Teresa Morris, yes. Oh, we have to mention that.
All right.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yeah. All right, so the next motion is to have as our agents, so in other words, because we're doing habitat maintenance, the maintainers need to have the Conservation Commission review what's gonna happen there and where things can happen and where they can't. And so there are an RDA request for determination of applicability that needs to be filed with the town in order for the, those maintaining the property to move forward. And as the property owners, we are essentially maintaining the property, and we are, I would like a motion for Emily Fine as the permit holder to be the applicant, be the agent applying for the town for maintenance. Did I, I see you nodding, Jessica, so I guess I said that right.
Representative would be the ideal word.
The representative for the town. So is there a motion, Emily Fine holder, to apply as the town's representative for the maintenance of this property? Teresa, are you gonna make the motion, or should Chaz or me?
I thought I did, so, so move.
Oh, okay, thank you, I didn't hear it. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. So we've already discussed a little bit, are there any further questions?
So I just wanna ask, is it typical that the property owner would be appointed?
That the property owner would be appointed? Usually, if you were the property owner and you were gonna do work on your property, if you were personally doing the work, you would be the applicant. If you had hired an engineer or a wetland scientist, they might be the applicant. In this case
Okay, I understand now, thank you.
We, we are designating Emily as the representative because she is the one that does the work out there with the species. She and, and others. But she would be the town's representative for this work. And she would do the applying with the Conservation Commission. So you, me, and Chaz will not be going before the Conservation Commission, it's Emily that would be. And, and, and they would discuss what needs to be done.
Okay, now, I understand, thank you for that.
You're welcome. Eric, do you have anything that you wanna add to this discussion?
No, I think you've described it perfectly.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything that they wanna say? I mean, I won't put anybody on the hot seat. So in that case, are we ready for a vote? Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa Morris, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yeah. So that means that we can move forward with this. And on Friday, we have a meeting here at Town Hall to discuss more about how that's going to take place, timing, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I think that's it for that part of the discussion. The second part is the conservation restriction. And I will say that we, the votes have already taken place to place a conservation restriction on this property. The conservation restriction has not yet been written. We did receive Um, we did receive from uh NHESP a year ago. Um, a CR template that MISA uses. However, the um general uh CR template was updated by the state. In May of twenty twenty two. So I had reached out to Mike Jones and he has uh pointed us to two other. People there at NHESP who are working on updating the MISA CR and they would get that to us. Um, I will also say that um he is going to um. Help us with figuring out who the appropriate CR holder is because it cannot be town, we're the owners of the property. And it cannot be um the Conservation Commission because they aren't part of the town. So we need uh another entity to be the holder of the CR. And I'm hoping when we do the habitat maintenance that we um. Use whatever we do as kind of a template for how the property will be maintained as part of the CR coming up. So um there will be more on this later, but that is all I have for today. Unless um anyone else has anything. All right, thank you very much, everybody, and uh nine thirty meeting.
Thank you for your help, Emily.
Yes, thank you for being here, Emily. Do you have anything that you wanna add to this before we go on? You have done news.
Okay, um I don't know, it's just that area is a very special place. If you haven't been there, take a walk through there. Um, and it's just great that there's gonna be a CR on the property. And um I'm happy to volunteer my time to to help keep that place. A thriving community of lots of different species. So thank you.
Thank you, Emily. All right, uh we're moving on now. It is six thirty four. We're not too far off um to uh. Our Land Use Coordinator, Mike Crowley, who is here with us.
Sure.
And Mike, if you don't mind moving up the table, so the sound is a little better for those at home.
Certainly. Can everybody hear me in the studio audience? Hello, can you hear me? I see Teresa nodding, so I assume I'm coming through. All right, uh hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Mike Crowley. I'm the Land Use Coordinator for Town Townsend. Um, I just wanted to come by and do a little bit of an update and talk about some of the plans that we're currently looking into regarding um. The MBTA Communities Act uh that was published by the state. Um, for those unfamiliar, the state uh created um a set of guidelines that we're referring to MBTA communities that relates to. Um uh building uh zoning for housing as a right in certain communities in Massachusetts. Um, the uh the full act is of section three A of the zoning act, which is uh, which we is basically referring to as the uh the multifamily zoning districts. Um, we've been working with the state on this for a while now, uh trying to figure it out, but they did finally issue some. Final guidance for communities, and so there's some updates for Townsend. Um, thankfully, with some great dialogue with the state, they were able to recognize that not all communities are the same in Massachusetts, and in particular, they, in the final guidance, created a new. Template for uh breakdown for how different communities are allocated under the program. Um, and in particular, there was the creation in this final draft of the adjacent small town category. This is uh an act that usually is related to the proximity to municipal transit uh and state transit through MBTA. Massachusetts Bay Transit Authority. Townsend is a community that doesn't have any a train station or transit authority within the community. But we are adjacent to towns that do, um and so there are different categories for towns with with. MBTA transit within the community, adjacent communities, and now adjacent small towns. Um, the guidance, uh the state guidance called for the creation of specific zoning districts. Uh, where uh multifamily housing is zoned by right, which means there not, doesn't need to be a special permit to have multifamily housing. Um, and there are some stipulations about density and overall numbers, um and I'll just touch base a little bit on it, but I wanna bore anyone, although if anyone has more questions, I'd love to sit down and chat with them directly about it. Um, but uh under the new guidelines, thankfully, they have changed uh Townsend's requirement. Uh, under the last, under the, I would say, the second to last draft of the guidelines, Townsend was going to be uh required to create. Um, seven uh fifty acres of area that was zoned to allow for fifteen units per acre for a total of seven hundred fifty units. Thankfully, with some discussion with the state and the fact that that can be very difficult to do for a community that doesn't have a sewer system, uh they have revised uh this new category of adjacent small town. And so Townsend now has a requirement for only a hundred and seventy eight um units. Spread over a different density level.
Can I add?
Yes.
Good question. Does that one hundred seventy eight include what we already have or is this new housing?
So it's more, so this this requirement is not actually for constructed housing, it's for zoning. It has to be area of zone to allow for housing as a right without special permit. Um, so we do have the capacity to create. Um overlay districts over pre-existing high-density areas or other areas that we'd like to zone for high-density housing. Um, so it can, we can utilize existing units. However, there are several stipulations about what the areas within that. Um zoning district have to have in terms of like density, building as a right, affordable housing, lots of benchmarks and standards. Um, so it could be something that we overlay on top of pre-existing multifamily housing. We could overlay on top of. Pre-existing undeveloped plots or even pre-existing residential lots. Again, this MBTA communities guidance doesn't actually have anything required for built, so this is not something that we have to go out. And build these units or there's some deadline that we have to meet for having these constructed. It's more about zoning, making sure that that is, that housing is treated as a as a uh as a right. On these areas that are under this zoning overlay district. Um, sure, of course, uh more questions are good, please. Um, there were some other guidance changes in this. Um, in particular, they restricted, for the most part. Um, the amount of affordable housing that can be allowed under these MBTA community districts. Um, there now is a cap on a maximum ten percent affordable housing in the multifamily housing zoning. Um. Just for those of you at home who don't know, uh, we're in a pretty high-income area because we're in the same income area as Boston in terms of grouping of Massachusetts. So affordable housing, to be qualified for affordable housing, you have to make under, I think, seventy one thousand dollars a year. So that's most, that's town, including myself, would qualify for that. So I just kind of get an idea. When you hear affordable housing, everyone has a lot of different interpretations. For Townsend, that means if you make under seventy thousand dollars a year, or I think it's a hundred and eleven thousand dollars for a family uh for more. Uh, so it's 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 something that is relative more to the community's needs as opposed to just a blanket um standard across the state. Um, so uh there is one exception under the Affordable Housing Clause, which is. You're allowed to have up to twenty percent affordable housing, um if the zoning in the area district includes. Properties that are already under, that are under the zoning designation of a forty R. Um, so. Forgive me if there's a lot of numbers and acronyms. I'll try and explain things a little bit throughout. Um, forty R is a high-density zoning program that was created in the early two thousands. To allow for zoning um as a right for residential development at a high density similar to MBTA communities. Um, it had a higher threshold for um affordable housing, which is the twenty percent. Um, it was something that was outlined as a a good option for town in the town's housing production plan that was completed earlier in this year. Um, and something that was worth investigating into to see if it would be a good match for Townsend. Um, additionally, the forty R program has an incentive um program associated with it. There is a payment for. Um, if the zoning bylaws passed, there's some secondary payment by the state for each unit that is built. And if there are children of school age in the areas that are under the forty R development, there is payments by the state to support the school system. Um, so it does seem like forty R is a good match for Townsend under that regard. Specifically because we have this new state mandate that's going to have to require us to have a zoning district for a hundred and seventy eight new units. Um, but there's no funding associated with that, and then there's this secondary program forty R, which would allow for some funding. Both in the short term and then in ongoing where we're going to schools. So we're kind of pursuing that right at this time as an option for the Townsend. So I'm gonna stop there and have a little more conversation, but I wanna open up for questions because I just said a lot of numbers and a lot of words, and I wanna make sure everyone's up to date.
I do have a question.
Sure.
It has more to do with online. Um, does anybody have a question about what Mike just talked about? Teresa.
Just in general, this area that has to be um zoned. Does it, does it have to be buildable lots or can, is there, you know, did they have to be perked and all of that?
That's a great question because there's a lot of nuances to that. Um, it does have to meet requirements of a certain amount of buildability. For example, we just can't zone weapons for high-density housing that would never be considered buildable. But there isn't necessarily um as much rigor about what amount. Has to be stipulated for building, so we don't have to go out and figure out exactly how much it's separate capacity could hold. If we do um have, if we do pursue these forty R districts as like overlays within MBTA communities to help and. And improve the zoning and allow for a little more state aid, there are specific requirements and processes you go through to determine like roughly how many units are buildable, what capacity you could have for these acres based on the different standards. Um, we have already, as part of MBTA community funding that was released for communities. Uh, town voted to hire uh have MRPC, Monishut Regional Planning Authority. We previously allocated some money that we received by grants specifically for help with this to hire contractors, and so they're helping us doing the work. Figuring out what exactly we would need to qualify for. If there was any buildability assessments regarding forty R, which there are some baked into the process about like. What's, how much capacity could each unit have and things like that. Um, and this is again reminding overlay districts for zoning. That build as, buildable is right by zoning use, but doesn't omit other standards that are out there. So for example. If there are wetlands in proximity, you still have to go through the Conservation Commission. Uh, any good work, still have to go through the Building Commissioner's Office, so that still has to meet all the normal standards that we have in town for suitable and safe housing. Um, as well as development. So it's just something that, it's a great question because it is. A little more nuanced to talk about zil- zoning without automatically thinking of a specific project of building over underneath. But we in Townsend, because we wanna have good planning, are making sure that whatever we put in zoning does ensure that whatever gets built. Follows safe standards and best practices. So does that help a little bit, Teresa? Okay, fantastic.
Um, Chaz or Eric, anything else to add? Okay, so my question is, um, MJTC meeting was last week Wednesday and they went over all these deadlines and. Adjacent small towns, uh the deadline to submit the action plans is January thirty first, twenty twenty three, which is four months away. Um, and so uh um. Uh, I guess my question is, do you know, Mike, is the DLCA grant working on our action plan? And if not, do we, the town, need to uh talk to perhaps the planning board? Um, or I don't know, Eric, you might have ideas on this. Um, how how do, how do we get the? We don't have to have the zoning bylaws in place or anything like that, but we have to have a submission of an action plan.
Yes, so if I can answer that a little bit and then certainly more, so. Um, just for first off, you made a good point about the different deadlines. The final deadline for. Um submitting the compliance, basically saying we have a district that is in place, ready to go, we think it's gonna, it's what we need. That deadline for Jason Small Towns is December thirtieth, twenty twenty five, so we have some time. Uh, the action.
Do the work.
That's, that, well, not to do the work, to do, have the zoning done.
To have the zoning.
Have the zoning done.
That's what I mean by do the work.
The action plan is basically a plan where we write out, okay, this is how we're gonna address these bylaws. This is where, what we're gonna do. These are our timelines for different pieces of district. Um, because of the nature of this being across most communities, many communities in Massachusetts. For some communities, they already have housing areas that meet the standard, and so their action plan would be, we're gonna create an overlay district over this area that already counts anyway.
I know, but what if done us?
So for Townsend, uh I am working on a preliminary submission, um but it's going to get reviewed by the planning board as well. Um, and I'm also going, is also going to get reviewed by the Townsend um housing. Board because that's someone who has been very much involved in this. When it, for us, we would need to create bylaws specifically for these zoning districts that would have to go to town meetings, so the town would have the opportunity to offer input as well as zoning.
That's the two years.
That's, that's the time after, but creating an action plan would be like, we would like to start bringing a first version of this to town meeting at this date. And in part for Townsend, it seems to make sense to create zoning districts rather than zone a huge area all at once and say, we hope we got it right. Zone one area at a time first and kind of explore, making sure that we're having the best uh overall result for Townsend to zone in different districts at a time. And so our action plan would be, we're gonna zone a certain number of parcels in this timeline, followed by another number of parcels in this timeline.
So. I guess my question is, who are the responsible individuals for the deadline to submit?
Oh, that's the easy one. Sorry, the, that, that's me. That's Land, that's Land Use Coordinator, but everything is gonna go through the planning board and the housing authority before anything gets submitted by the state. Because I I am the administrative person that was assigned to submit the forms uh previously. And I had to put some, someone's name had to go on it, so it was kind of thing that the boards and committees elected that my name won't.
Yeah, well, you would know, that's why.
I didn't know any better, but no, um, so it's something that I'm actually going to write up a a draft of the action plan within the next probably two weeks. And start bringing it to the planning board and the housing board so that they can review it and make sure, all right, this seems reasonable. I like this. How are we gonna implement? So.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Sure, um, just any more questions before I move on to the next little bit?
I'm good.
Okay.
Eric, do you have any question? No, all right.
So a big part of this is making sure that there's plenty of public engagement. People understanding what's going on, why we're working on it, why we're choosing the areas we are. Uh, so this is something that I've gone through a lot of boards and committees, and there's gonna be some public outreach with, I've already gone and met with. Uh, and discussed this with the planning board. I've already gone and discussed this with the housing board. Uh, here for the board, it's likely today, tomorrow, I'm gonna be the zoning board. We're gonna take it on tour for sure. Um, and also solicit a lot of, give a lot of opportunity for the public to be involved in this process. Uh, we are looking at, feels like for the town, the best fit is creating forty R zoning districts and then say, these are our MBTA zoning districts. Because it does provide for that incentive, and in doing so, just to make sure that best practices are followed, we're going to create it in stages and create certain small, a small one and try to attempt to write zoning bylaws for that. With help of the MRPC, um which could be brought forward at the spring tough uh fall, this is spring town meeting that is occurring in May. Um, and I can talk a little bit about the first area that we're looking at for those uh that zoning district, the forty R zoning. That is something people wanna have, here, have some preliminary conversations about.
Um, I think what I'd rather do is see the action plan in January and then. You know, I don't know that the action plan has to specify exactly where the locations are.
No.
I think it can say, you know, we're planning to roll out forty R districts in appropriate places.
Yeah.
Over time, or something like that, and we can talk about where those places are.
Yeah.
After that. That's my thought and.
We had uh on the housing production plan, there is, it it outlines several different areas. If anybody's interested, they can take a look at the housing and. Production plan that is online.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, in in that specifies some areas that uh the housing authority has has identified.
Where are necessarily. The action by plan could reference the housing production.
Yeah.
The areas that were.
Yeah, the specific considerations are making sure that there is adequate water supply um from the town, from the town water system. Um, ensuring that they are on uh in areas that are in close enough proximity to community centers and resources. We can't. You know, it's not something we wanna put, we're, we can put these way out in the woods and just ignore them because we want them to be part of the community and also be able to be accessed by the community members. Uh, so we're working on that.
All right, then I think we're, we're good unless Teresa or Chaz, you have any further questions for that?
Good work, Mike. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, thanks, Mike.
Um, can I, can I say something very, real quick?
You, you had your chance, Eric.
Yeah, sorry. Um, so this is something that's going to uh, that was going, it was scheduled for my town administrator update. Um, but given that Mike is here, um and I don't wanna make him stay as long as, is that my last? I um. I did wanna let the board know that uh unfortunately, Mike has tendered his letter of resignation to the town. And so we will be losing Mike's services sometime in October.
Um, he said we're gonna get this drafted together in the next two weeks.
Um, so I, we we can talk a little bit more about the specifics going forward during one of the town administrators' update, but I did wanna. Um, I, from the town administrator's office, I wanted to say thank you. I, from the town administrator's office, I wanted to say thank you to Mike for his service to the town. I wanted to make sure that the board had a chance to, to, to let Mike know how we felt about him being a, being a, a member of the, the Land Use Department. And I, it's gonna be a great loss, but he's got a great opportunity. I, I for one wish him well going forward.
We hate to see that because he just got here.
I know.
So we understand.
Did you second that?
I second, I second what Eric said, but I know where you live.
That's fine. No, I, well, not to, to, to completely step onto that sidebar, but I, I am very grateful for the time I've had here. I've loved working here in Townsend. It's something that I did not want to step away from, but I had an opportunity that I did not solicit, but did work out quite well that I, I, I felt it was something that I just had to pursue in this time. I, in addition to being here for a few more weeks to help facilitate the transition and making sure everything's put together for whatever comes next, I am very much willing to be available for coming in and even just popping into committee meetings and, and things like that. And just offering, hey, this is what we're working on then to help everyone know how the history projects that I have helped kind of steward in this time here to make sure that those are able to seamlessly continue as the town needs them to do in whatever way the town wants to do.
I appreciate that.
So I appreciate that. It's been a really good time being here. And I'm gonna stick around for a little bit in case there's anything else that comes up that I need to address. So.
I just want to say, I think having you in this position has demonstrated how important it is for the town to have a land use coordinator. And so we're gonna get that posted as soon as we can. And hopefully we'll get someone with, as good a background.
I was gonna say, especially with somebody with the background that you brought. So thank you for all you did.
Appreciate that. I, I am very happy to have been here the way I was. And I'm really glad that in my time here, I was able to kind of build out a very sturdy foundation for whatever Townsend plans to do next.
And it was really nice to have Land Use Office fully staffed. So we hope that it will be fully staffed.
I'm sure it will be very quickly. Yes. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we're going backwards to 2.2. The common villager license for 119 Nutrition Incorporated doing business at Main Street Nutrition. So this was in SharePoint. It's for a common villager's license. And it's basically a protein shake and energy key shot in the harbor. Correct, Sabrina, correct me if I'm wrong on you. So it's down at Harbor Village, right? It is on that baby's lot. Where baby's been on that lot.
Yeah.
On the, on the top. On the top part, yeah. Okay, so the application is all here. And does anybody have any questions?
It looks like they've submitted everything they needed to.
Do they have similar businesses elsewhere? Or is this a first? Not that I'm allowed. All right. So are there any further questions? It looks like everything is. So is there a motion to grant the common villager's license for Main Street Nutrition?
I'll make a motion that we grant a common villager's license for Main Street Nutrition on 119 Nutrition Inc. Oh, sorry, 119 Nutrition Inc. doing business as Main Street Nutrition.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? I think I heard a no. All right. Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa Amos, yes.
That's Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kelly. So we'll get that signed and I can see the applicants online. So that's 2.2. All right, we have some appointments here. All right.
Do you want me to read the motion?
Yes, if you could do the motion for Joseph Kossi.
Okay, I make a motion that we appoint Joseph Toffey as an on-call fireman.
On-call firefighter, subject to-
Sorry.
May I make an amendment to that?
Yeah.
Subject to successfully passing a physical and background check.
All right.
Okay, I amend the motion to appoint Joseph to Kossi as an on-call firefighter, subject to a physical and a background check.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All right, well, call vote, Teresa.
Teresa Amos, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kelly, yes. All right, we have-
Congratulations, Joseph.
Yes. We have two volunteer response forms here for the West Townsend Reading Room. So
Before I make the motion, Madam Tia, what is the correct name for the committee? Because one says West Townsend Meeting Room and one says West Townsend Reading Room.
It's the Reading Room. Where does it say Meeting Room? Oh, I see. Yeah, no, it's the Reading Room.
Thank you.
That's a, that's just the type of agenda. All right. So is there a motion to appoint Darling Heatherman to the West Townsend Reading Room Committee?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Darling Heatherman to the West Townsend Reading Room Committee.
I would, I have a slight amendment. Day through April 2025, that's three years, correct?
Yes.
Through the end of April 2025.
Through April 2025.
Okay, the second.
The second.
Let me just write on here for your opinions. Any further discussion? Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa Amos, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kelly, yes. And then we also have a volunteer response form for Eduardo Lopez.
I make a motion that we appoint Eduardo Lopez to the West Townsend Reading Room. Until, is that also April 2025?
Second.
Any further discussion? Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa Amos, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kelly. So welcome.
Well, thank you very much. That was quick.
That's excellent.
After our last meeting, right?
That's right.
Excellent. Thank you for your volunteerism.
All right, moving on to 4.1, the CBA mandatory referral. So this is for a decision that was made by the planning board that is being appealed through the CBA. The hearing, planning board hearing is Monday, 10:23. And is there a CBA here? No, it looks like it's just the planning board. For request for amendment to the planning board decision dated July 18th, 2022, granting site plan review special permit for conversion of a commercial building to multifamily residential for multifamily residential for wetbeds and units. The applicant is Lord and Revocable Trust, Michael Lord and Trustee. It's at 256 Main Street, assessors now 51 block 31 lot zero. It's in the downtown commercial district. And the hearing with the planning board is on October 3rd, 2022 at 7:45 PM. So all of the information was in the SharePoint and this was a mandatory referral. So it is just asking for our comments.
So I'm a little confused. Is this a mandatory referral from the planning board?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know why I thought it was a CBA mandatory referral.
That's where my, that's where my confusion lies.
It's a planning board mandatory referral. And I'm probably the one that works CBA. So I guess we don't really need a motion here. We just need to discuss and put a comment. Let me motion for a comment. So.
Um, this is, was discussed by the planning board and the planning board had approved the special permit to allow for them to use their former commercial space and turn it into two additional apartments in addition to the other two. And the special condition that the planning board had placed on it was that they would be affordable units. This this is now asking, excuse me, to have that, the affordable units being taken away from it. The concern of mine, I don't want to take any outside comment on this because this is a mandatory referral for the board of selectmen.
Yeah.
The concern of mine is that you've gone through a special permit process and there was a condition put on there in regards to it, but I do believe that some of the work has been done already. So I'm just a little I don't want to set a precedence that somebody has granted a special permit and then as they're going down the line, make a, a change to it. That would be my, my only concern. To get initially approved and the pro, the project moves forward and the you know, the the provisions or the conditions are being asked to be changed halfway through.
I have a concern about that as well. I I you know, we, we I guess there, there's a, a vision of, I mean, I was opposed to changing commercial space to residential space. That's me personally. Only because we have such little amounts of commercial space. That said, if we're gonna turn commercial space into residential space, it would be nice to have it where it was. Given that we have an aging population, I I support having it being a restrictive work house for that reason. So
May I point out information because there's something that I think that you're that is being misrepresented right here. If I can help, I don't, it's not by intention.
Okay, I don't want to entertain any conversation because it's a mandatory referral, so it's not really up for
It's not for, it's not our decision.
Yeah, it's just our opinion.
Our opinion. Okay, so and we have what we have in the SharePoint, but there was something else that should have been in there. I mean, we have the decision. I guess my only comment would be, we, the board of selectmen, support the planning board in their decision.
In any decision they come to.
Yeah, right.
I agree with that.
I, I do too.
So that's our comment. The board of selectmen supports the planning board in the-
Their decision.
In their decision. And it needs a signature, which I suppose is not. All right. All right, thank you. All right, moving on to 4.3. Discuss establishing a public transportation task force. Okay, this stemmed out of our, this, I put this on the agenda and this stemmed out of the discussion that we had last time around buses and LRTA versus MBTA.
Right.
And our community services coordinator approached me and she and I had a discussion about the, that there is a need for transportation in town over and above what the LRTA provides. And what does that transportation look like? And some of the things we talked about is could this be an opportunity for, should there be an opportunity for a DLTA grant in the fall, usually they're due around Jandler, the applications. Should there be a, an opportunity, maybe one of the things that we should explore is the transportation needs in town. And so maybe it would make sense to have a working group. This is not MJTC territory, just maybe the community services coordinator, a select board member. Maybe a housing authority member, the community services coordinator, someone from council and agent to meet and discuss what do we need in town? Where, how do we see it happening? Emily had a lot of good information from other towns because she's been meeting with other community services coordinators. Some of them have like taxi consortiums, you know, that you can call that, you know, there's that. Do we need a, a parking lot? Or should we just have a bus stop somewhere in town? How does it work with March transportation versus LRTA, the Monmouth City Region versus the Wollongong? So this was just an idea that we were talking about. And so what did, what did I say? Discuss establishing a public transportation task force. So I said it was timely to put it on the agenda for now. And it was to see what the select board thought about it. And Eric, feel free to weigh in here too. You know, but this is separate from MJTC. This is more what, what does transportation look like in town, especially if we're doing 40R districts or something like that, where we have denser housing, maybe people who don't have car and might need to get to Fitchburg or to a train where, so just throwing it out there.
Well, I, if you don't mind, Teresa, I know that I've done a lot of work with Emily with the heat study that we did regarding the old Goid study that we were in. I know that one of the major things that came up in our survey was transportation and that was getting individuals even to Groton to, or, or Fitchburg, those are the two more local places. Transportation has always been a problem for Townsend. And it's also, I believe, was identified in the master plan as well as transportation being a difficult thing. If we do have interested parties, I think a task force would be a good idea.
So Teresa, what are your thoughts on this?
I agree, but I also feel that it, I, I thought it would be something that would be addressed by the master planning committee. So if members of them were part of that initial discussion, I would like to see them part of the task- initial discussion, I would like to see them part of the task force.
I don't think the master plan is is, I mean, they have to appoint, the planning board has to appoint a new master plan committee, I think.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that I the I think the master plan is the guide for the town on how to go forward and um so maybe I need to spend more time reading the transportation section.
Yeah, there it it's it does express a need, Townsend does have a need now. Um, to dovetail into our conversation last time, I think it's really important for us to see the benefits of both the Lowell Transit and MART because this is where um I'll give you a, for instance, and I can talk about it in my neck of the woods because that's where I have the specialty at. If I had an individual that lives in Townsend that needs to get to the Groton Medical Center for you know, medications, for instance, and they need to get medications once a week. Um, there's very difficult um. There's the little to no avenue to get down transportation to be able to do that now.
Public transportation.
Correct. If we were, if we were closer to Fitchburg, there's a a service called PT1, which is you know, they will go pick you up, bring you to your appointment and then bring you back, but those are um insurance specific type things. Um, I believe with our aging population that we really should be looking more into to increasing the transportation for for everyone because that's, I have a feeling.
We do have transportation for um seniors.
Right, but that's to and from the senior center, but I'm saying to.
No, no, to you can sign up to go to doctors' appointments. They they hit medical facilities.
Don't they?
But I don't know if it's accessible to the general public.
That's, yeah, but and it's that's also run out of Lowell, I think, right?
It is.
Yeah.
It's LRTA.
I think with a combined effort, if it doesn't go to Lowell, we could use the other.
So that's what we're talking about. What is the need and who's looking at it?
Yep.
And if and so the thought was to set up a task force um to do that. So, I mean, I'm willing to work with Emily to come up with something a little more uh specific if you all think it's important. Eric, do you have thoughts on this?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, just really quickly, and I can't, I think it kind of dovetails into what you were saying, which is it might be good if we're gonna set up a task force to give them some very specific tasks that we would be looking for, not just kind of a broad mandate, but some specific things to be looking over a relatively short period of time to come back to the Board of Selectmen with, you know, which is an evaluation that I I think the kind of things you spoke about, you know, it is um an evaluation of the different options between LRTA and and the and more um um whether or not it's even feasible to have a bus line go through town and and if if so, are there, how would that work? And 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 is there, you know, kind of a need um slash location where a parking ride would work and where is the most effective place to have that parking ride shuttle go to? Is it gonna go to Fitchburg? Is it gonna go to to one of the stops on the Fitchburg line closer into Boston? Uh, you know, I think there's those are some specific questions and maybe they could, you know, maybe prepare like a a community poll to to try to get some information from the community about whether or not they would use those sort of of um.
That's where we were thinking MRPC's help might come in, the community poll.
Right.
Of setting that up.
Yeah, I so I I just think that giving them a specific mandate as opposed to just setting it up and give them, you know, I think some guidance would be really helpful. And I think the way you were talking about with Emily about talking about some specific things is really helpful.
Okay, so I'll get that started if um Teresa, if you're good with this too, I'll get it started and work with Emily and we'll bring it back.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Couple meetings. Okay, alright, and the specific tasks, that's a good idea. So thanks, Eric. Alright, four point four. This is again mine on the agenda. Uh. I would like to make a formal request that the um school committee representatives for Townsend post the meetings and agendas um for the school committee, general meetings and the uh finance subcommittees on the calendar, on the webpage. So that um it it could be as simple as just these are the dates and I know that for the regular school committee meetings, you can find all that on the school website, but a lot of people in town, especially those who don't have children in the schools, don't really look at the school district calendar. They're looking at the town calendar for when are the meetings. And um I I guess I would like to see them posted there. Um, I have a little bit more to say about that. Um. But uh, what are your thoughts on? Anybody? Or am I the only one that?
No, I was waiting for.
No, I agree. Um, um, the only thought I saw I had when I saw it saying this, I agree with it, but is it enough? Should we also have the minutes there? Um, but since I know where to find the minutes, I I don't know, but I thought I'd just throw that out there, but I agree at the minimum, we should have this.
The meeting and the link to the agendas um is what I would like to see.
Well, I think we're unanimous in that. I believe the more exposure that the townspeople have with what's going on with the school, especially with the finance on the subcommittee, I think is very important um for transparency. So I, my vote would be yes on them.
And that's why I thought adding, in addition to these two, adding the minutes, because unless you're familiar with the North Middlesex District's page, it's a little difficult to find the minutes.
You're right, it's not straightforward. Um, so perhaps we should ask Harrison, we could even do it that way. We could ask Harrison to make a page for the school committee on our website where he could post the minutes of the meetings. We could do something like that, which wasn't what I had in mind, but Eric.
Oh, well, what I was gonna suggest is something similar to that, which is um uh if, as Teresa indicated, the the minutes are hard to find, we can have Harrison just pointed to have a a school committee page with a direct link to their minutes page. So if you're looking for minutes, there's where their minutes are. Rather than uploading it onto our website, we just have a a link that's upfront on our website that says, if you're looking for school committee minutes, you don't have to go dig for them, we'll just give you the direct page. Um. But I do think that having the having the meeting um the meetings uh and and agendas posted on our pages would be helpful.
Um, so I guess, Eric, my question is for you. Is that something that we can ask the school committee to do?
Well, we can add, I think, I think we can put in a request as a school committee to provide, to 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 send over agendas, send over the meeting dates and agendas to the clerk's office for our clerk to post. Um, as as the clerk's office posts any other meeting that they get, so we can put in that request. As to the, you know, we can definitely I mean, I can ask Harrison to create a page on the website that put gives a link to all that information on the school department's website. Um, I think it would be easier if there was just an email that came to the clerk's office and it just posted on our calendar.
Yeah, so I agree with that for posting the meetings and the agendas. I think that Harrison creating the page and pointing it to minutes would be good.
Okay, I will ask.
Separate from the agenda. Yeah.
If if that's the will of the board, I will, I will ask the the school the school administration and Harrison to do those two things.
Oh, we just got done. Hold on.
Oh, I thought you guys lost power and I was like, oh, wow. And I realized the camera's still on, so you didn't lose power.
Yeah.
Nope, nobody's moving.
You're sitting too still.
Okay, so is that, do we need a motion for that? To um request that the school committee posts, send over, just include us in the posting for meeting dates and agenda.
I I would like a motion so I can tell the school administration that the that that this is an official motion of the board. I think that would be.
Um, is there?
Motion, oh. As it works, I'll make a motion that we request the school Townsend School Committee uh representative to post the meeting and the agenda uh for the Townsend School School Committee and School Committee Finance School Committee Finance Subcommittee on the calendar, on the homepage of the school committee and the school committee finance subcommittee. Think I said that twice, but anyway.
Yeah, you did, but on the homepage of the town of Townsend webpage.
Yeah, that town, town of Townsend webpage.
There you go, uh and I will second that.
Okay. Alright, um, any further discussion before we vote? Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa Morse, yes.
Ethel Jackson Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kelly, yes. And while we're on the school committee subject, I just, this is probably a good place for it. Last week I attended the finance committee um meeting and um it it was a good meeting. It was informative in that the uh superintendent discussed the challenges that they're going to have for FY um for the next fiscal year, so FY twenty four budget. And um I I just wanna um, well, let me, I'll go over the things that, very briefly, the things that they discussed. But um last year we needed, uh, we were looking for an override to fully fund the town government. And this, the um school district was uh very accommodating in our needs. Um, we, the town were faulted somewhat for not having spoken earlier in the year and made the need for the override more um visible to the town folks. And I guess um I just want to note that the things that the Fin finance committee for the district we're talking about are also issues for the the town as a whole. Uh, those things were staffing, being able to keep the staffing that they have. The fact that um they have uh collective bargaining coming up for five of their unions, we have the same thing. I think it's four out of five this year and the fifth next year for collective bargaining, so we have that challenge as well. Um. Uh, they need additional staffing, a second assistant principal um and another secretary needs to be added. Uh, there could be a building project. I don't think we have a building project other than the Casita um of which is uh always fun to talk about, um, security issues. Um, and uh they also discussed um the cost of fuel, specifically, they were talking about natural gas. Those are all things that also affect the town as a whole. And the school district isn't a separate entity from the town. It is part of us. So I think we need to be talking now about the fact that in order to fully fund the asks from the district and to fully fund what we, the town, need to continue to provide services for the townspeople, which means all of us and our children. We need to be talking about a potential override now, if that's where we're going. And from what I heard of the finance committee, it's, you know, they they um said, well, we gave three hundred thousand to the towns that we were going to use for staffing. Now we don't have a staffing backup. And um so they want to recreate that next year. Uh, well, we need that too, so we all need that. So I guess all I'm saying is should we need an override, the override is for the town as a whole, that includes the school and the town itself. The services that Town Hall provides and the Highway Department and you know, all the various um entities that make up the town. So I just wanted to know that, that's all. So. Um, and to get that conversation started early, because if that is what we need, we need to be starting to talk about it now so that people understand why there is a valid question and a town meeting question for an overview.
Madam Chair, did I I I thought I was elected to the uh finance, school committee, finance subcommittee, whatever it was, right, last week, last meeting?
Are you attending the budget summit in October?
Well, that's, I'm just trying to figure out, did I miss a meeting that I should have? What was the meeting you?
I went online. I was looking for, and this is why I put the fact that uh we need these posted on the town website. If I had to hunt, find the school committee meetings and then the the finance subcommittee. So I just took it upon myself to go.
Well, thank you very much, because I didn't, so, and I think it was.
No, it's perfectly okay. It it's just that I wanted to hear where we're going. And I know that at the the uh budget summit in October, I think you're gonna be there, Eric, right? And is it you, Teresa?
No.
No, it's Chad. Chad is the liaison. Yeah. Um, who are going to that and someone from FinCom is going as well.
Dave, yes.
Um, Dawn. So I I just saw that there was a finance committee meeting and I thought, well, I should just sit in on and see what is, where it's going and um everything that I heard made me think, yeah, we're going, we're gonna need an override to fully fund or we're gonna have to figure out not only, I mean, the whole town, which includes the school district. It's gonna need to figure out how to um exist so that everybody gets the services that are needed within the revenue that we have. That's all. So you didn't miss this, you know, you yeah, you didn't miss something that you should have been after, Teresa. That was just me thinking. I I know.
Well, I think, as we all know, it 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 does help to look earlier at the uh at anything that comes. But we've also, we're all well aware of um the town's uh feelings towards an override and I don't think the suit. It would take a lot of convincing to get that. So if that's the way you feel, we need to go, Madam Chair. We, as you said, we really need to work with the community very early to see if we have any support, because I don't think we do.
Um, I'm not saying that we have to go that way. I'm just saying that everybody needs to be aware of.
Right, yeah.
All, you know, everybody needs to be aware of it. Um, that's all, that it's not just them, whoever them are, asking um that it's it's for the town and the school district is part of the town. It's not separate from the town. You know, they have a separate budget, but the revenue comes from the town as a whole. And yes, we want to educate our kids um uh as well as we possibly can, but we also need to make sure that we have all the services that people have come to um expect, such as trash. Um. So, you know, pickup. I mean, the one thing that I can say is if we're if your trash is being picked up, you've seen what your tax dollars can do. And that is a huge amount of money that we've spent for that. So, and that is also important to the town. So is it more important to have trash picked up or is it more important to have all the teachers that we need in the school district? Is it important to have all the hours that department heads are asking for, for their departments? Is that important? Um, so where I just think the town needs to be thinking early about where our priorities lie. So that when I mean, we're in the funding cycle now, uh-oh. And our lights are going out, but we did pay the bill. But anyway, we have the the things that were mentioned, I could check off and say, yeah, the the Town Hall has that too. We have all these things. You know, collective bargaining, they're gonna you know, they're losing teachers to other places because the funding is better. Um, they're doing an independent study on pay scales and where the district falls. Well, we have the same sort of thing, and where do we fall? And so shouldn't it be across the board, all of town, which includes everybody that works for And so shouldn't it be across the board, all of town, which includes everybody that works for the town, no matter whether it's in Town Hall or in schools? So I think we have to be thinking more as a unit. And if we need to go for an override, we're going as a unit. It's not them or us or, you know. That's all I have to say. I've probably said it enough. And I don't want anybody saying, well, you never came to our meetings. And so we will be at those meetings, you know, to understand. And hopefully, everybody understands where it is. And we come to a manageable solution that doesn't wind up, you know, two weeks before town meeting, trying to figure out what we can cut and then what we can put back. And all of that, that was terrible. So, you know, it was no fun for anybody. That's all. All right, moving on. 4.5, the Constable Policy. So we have a second reading today and it is slightly different than what it was the first time around. So should I go ahead and read it? Are we good with that?
I'm good with that.
All right. So this is 4.5 on the agenda, the second reading of the Constable Policy. And I'm gonna read it from top to bottom. Constable Application Process and Role Policy. Purpose: The purpose of this policy is to define the application process and the powers and duties of the constables appointed by the select board. Membership: The number of constables appointed by the select board shall be no more than five at any one time. An increase in this number must be approved by the select board, subject to the needs of the community. Vacancies shall be announced and publicized in accordance with the Town of Townsend Charter, Article 7, Section 710, Notice of Vacancies. Powers and Duties: The select board shall appoint constables for terms not exceeding three years, only for the service of one, limited forms of civil process within the geographical boundaries of the Town of Townsend, and two, all warrants and other processes directed to them by the select board for notifying town meetings or for other purposes. Powers and Duties: Converted appointment are strictly limited to only those necessary for these purposes or such other purposes as may be authorized by statute. Constables so appointed are not empowered to and shall not act as police officers. Constables shall not make arrests or otherwise take persons into their custody. They shall not serve warrants, capiace, or criminal processes. Constables shall not obtain query, criminal offender record information through CJS, the Criminal Justice Information System. Application Process: Interested applicants for constable shall make a written applicant to the select board, stating their reasons for desiring such appointment, such information as may be reasonably required by the select board relative to their fitness for the office, and authorization to search and review the applicant's criminal offender record information for it. Number two, applicants shall include in the application a statement as to the moral character of the applicant, signed by at least five reputable citizens of the city or town of their residence, one of whom shall be an attorney of law. Number three, the select board shall investigate the reputation and character of every applicant and their fitness for the Office of Constable, including both R and B registered motor vehicles and query criminal offender record information background checks. Number four, the Chief of Police or other official having charge of the police shall, upon request, give the select board all possible assistance in making such an investigation. Number five, the Office of Constable shall be built only by appointment of an applicant who is found by the select board after investigation, as the board said, to be a person of good repute and character and qualified for both said objects. And then, upon appointment, a constable shall not serve any civil process until the constable has given a bond to the town clerk as required by General Law, Chapter 41, Section 92. A constable shall comply with the Civil Process Fee Recording Requirement of General Law, Chapter 41, Section 95A and Section 95B. Failure to comply with the statutes may be grounds for removal from office. Number two, constables appointed by the select board are not employees of the Town of Townsend, but are considered special municipal employees for purposes of General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 1, and sequence, the Conflict of Interest Law. Number three, persons appointed to the Office of Constable may be appointed to such additional three-year terms as the select board determines, subject to a subsequent determination by the select board, that the person remains a person of good repute and character and remains qualified for both the Office of Constable. All constables shall be residents of Townsend at the time of original appointment and at all subsequent reappointments. The select board may remove a constable from office in accordance with the Town of Townsend Charter, Article 7, Section 7-10. So that is the second reading. Any comments? And this has been reviewed by Town Council. That's it. So is there a motion then to, if there's no further comments, is there a motion to accept the Constable Application Process and Role Policy?
Make a motion that the Constable Policy as read in the second reading.
Second.
Any further comments? All those in favor?
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Brian. All right. Thank you. We've done 4.6, 4.7, Preliminary Discussion of the Comcast Contract. We received, we, the town, received notice from Comcast that our agreement with Comcast is up in October, October 31st, I think it is, 2025. And that there is a 30 to 36 month process required for renewal. So I just thought that we should be aware of that and that we start thinking about what needs to be done. If you read the letter that was in the SharePoint, one of the things that they recommend, well, two things that I saw, were that you do some sort of review, an ascertainment process. I don't know if we need that or not. And also that we set up our Cable Advisory Committee. Those are two things. I don't know the timeline, so maybe Eric, you have more thoughts on this than I do. This is, I think, all of our first times, us, the Board of Selectmen, going through this process. So.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I was just gonna say, the first thing to do would probably be to contemplate setting up the Cable Advisory Committee. I don't think that the town would need to do any, any other, other work, other than set up the committee and begin to start looking at the, at the contract and see if there's any issues that we can identify in the existing contract that, that we feel like are gonna create an issue for us going forward. I haven't had a chance to fully review the existing Comcast contract. So I don't have anything else off my head that leaps out as a problem to me, but I know that other folks have, are probably, you know, more familiar with it. So setting up that, that, the advisory would be a good idea.
Another one where it's setting up a process and getting it going. So I do have a question though. It says, "As the issuing authority, you may begin the process of determining your community's cable-related needs and review Comcast cable communication performance under the current license." This is known as an ascertainment process. "You must notify Comcast Cable if you elect to begin the ascertainment process." "You may also be required to begin the ascertainment process if you receive a notice from Comcast invoking the formal renewal request." "You must begin the ascertainment process within six months of receiving such note." So anyway, I guess either we can pick it or they can pick to do that.
Yeah, they can, they can decide. I mean, my experience is they generally issue an ascertainment process if they feel like they're, that we're not effectively using or, like, there's parts of the contract that we're not availing ourselves of. We haven't gotten a notice like that. This is, this is a very long way down the, down the pike. So I, unless, unless the, the, the select board has some thoughts, I wouldn't suggest that we do a formal ascertainment process unless there, unless we have specific reasons that we feel like we've gotten, I don't know if members of the board have gotten calls about concerns about people's Comcast service or, or, you know, if they're not getting, other than price, which I know everybody complains about, but if the service is not being appropriately, your service calls are not being responded to, things like that. Absent those concerns, I think we would probably just be looking to, to, to do a regular kind of, you know, process with Comcast, which we have a lot of time to do at this point.
All right. All right. So we should be considering a cable provider. That's all there is on this there. I don't think there's any need for, about at this point. Just to make us aware, we're three, 36 months out at the end of October. And they say 30, 36, so coming up. All right. That's all I have on that, unless anybody else though. All right. So the next one is a request that came in Saturday, the 24th. Is the formal opening of the Swanacook Rail Trail Second Section. It's being held at noon on, I think, behind Harbor Autobody. Is where the, the ceremony is being held. We, the Board of Selectmen, were asked to speak and I am asking Chad to speak. I spoke at last year's opening and I am, I think that the second opening should go to Chad. And when the third section opens, Teresa, I think that should go to you, but that's what I think. So Chad, are you prepared to put something together for Saturday?
For the Saturday, yeah, we could do that.
All right. And in conjunction with that, they, Swanacook Greenways has spoken with the Senior Center for Use of the Van, because there isn't a lot of parking. Is that where they're opening or are they opening at the church? I should get that right.
I'm not really sure.
I know there isn't a lot of parking. The, the, it's down at the far end. I need to look at it. Sorry, guys.
I assumed it was where the, where we did the funding.
That's what I thought too, which was behind Harbor Autobody.
Right.
When, when we, when Swanacook Greenways accepted the earmark check for that section, that acceptance was done behind Harbor Autobody.
In the dead of winter.
In the dead of winter, very, very cold day.
So did the best of your knowledge, that's where we need to be Saturday?
Yes, but I can check an email, which I will.
Okay. And what time again?
I thought it was in here. I'm sorry, say that again, Teresa?
What time?
It is at noon on Saturday. That I'm. All right. So. So anyway, there should be a list. Let me see if I can get it up on SharePoint. So I've done. The. All right, currently, am I able to share my screen? All right. Well, I can read it, even if I can't share my, okay, I can now share. Thank you, Hartman.
You're welcome.
So looking at this, the Townsend Senior Center has agreed to let Swanacook Greenways to utilize the Council on Aging Roadrunner van as the shuttle for their opening ceremony on Saturday, September 24th, 2022, with the following stipulation. It must be approved by the Townsend Board of Selectmen or the town administrator. It will be driven by a Townsend Council on Aging staff driver, which is appropriate for dentures. Swanacook Greenways will cover the regular hourly wage for the driver. Swanacook Greenways will cover the cost of fuel. And specific stops will be determined by the Council on Aging Transportation Administration. Now, Truckalooza is going on on Saturday. And so I would assume they're gonna start behind, I don't see a route here. But I would assume that this van will start over by the Hawthorne Brooklyn Parking and Swanacook Parking, where people for Truckalooza will be parking. And then perhaps they'll stop at the Council on the Common or wherever else we have parking here in town. So I assume they will publish that. I don't know if Bill Rideout is on.
I haven't seen him.
You haven't seen him. So anyway, this is just to approve it and then we'll let them take it from there. Hopefully they'll put something up on the website that gives the route. Are we good with this? Is there a motion to approve the Senior Center van for Swanacook Rail Trail opening parking shut?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Swanacook van for the motion of the Rail Trail on this Saturday, the 24th.
All right. So any further discussion? All right then, Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kelly, yes. Okay, and I'm, I'm gonna stop my screen share. And I'm going to, we'll let Bill Rideout know that this is perfectly okay. And I'll sign it. And get that over to the Senior Center so that they have that. And we'll suggest that they publish a map and put it up on the website.
I agree. And if we find out that it's different from behind Harbor Auto, would you let me know?
Yeah. What I'm gonna do is, while we're looking at the, the sign by law.
Yeah.
I'm gonna do a quick run through mine.
Okay.
So. So Teresa, 4.9, this was a suggestion that we put this on the agenda by Teresa. So, and in the SharePoint, there was some notes that she had with. So Teresa, I'm gonna turn it over to you, to Tom.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay. So what I'm looking for here is to, the ability for us to direct. direct the Town Administrator to look into drafting a signage by law for residential properties only to go and then have that law go through whatever the proper procedures would be, whether it's planning boards, zoning boards, legal, whatever that would be. The purpose of the law, just so that you know, the background for it is as you, I'm sure most of you know, as you enter into New Hampshire, you start to see signs, lawn signs, they're just getting bigger and bigger and bigger. They're being plastered on houses, they're being plastered in windows, et cetera. We've been lucky that we haven't got to that point. But we're starting to see them. I've seen, I recently saw just coming into town. It wasn't on Townsend property yet, but you know, a a sign that was the entire size of a back of a tractor trailer bed. So I think before this happens to Townsend, I think we should be proactive. I'm not suggesting anything that in here is the right answers, but it's just some general ideas on how my my thoughts were working at the two o'clock in the morning when I wrote this out. So as I said, we would have to define what residential property was because this is not for commercial signage. This is just signage on on residential property. We I did steal, this is from another town. This is their definition of a site to other side. Maybe that would work for us. Maybe Eric could find something better. I do believe that all signage should be temporary in in nature, such as what you think of with those campaign signs or construction signs, driveway pavement type of sign. But they shouldn't be permanently mounted. They shouldn't be attached to the house. They shouldn't be in the windows. If if that can't be part of it, as I said, this is just my ideas, if it can't be that signage can't be in a window, then I do believe that the signage in the window shouldn't restrict more than ten percent of the window or larger or be at least as small or the size of what we determine, whichever is smaller. So again, my personal choice was that you couldn't have them attached to the house, but that was another thing that I did find another town did have a bylaw that the window signs couldn't be more than ten percent of this window section in which they are displayed. Town signs should not be located on town owned property unless getting written permission from the Board of Selectment and or Designate. Thinking that would be something like red run in the Times Square that, you know, would be something that we do allow. We allow it to be bigger than the sign, but those type of things, we should, they should be coming to the town or Eric for approval. And then we should have some type of enforcement. If obviously, if you conform, your can sign can stay. If you're not conforming, then we ask you to remove your sign and if you give you fourteen days notice if you don't remove your side, then there should be fines or court actions. Again, these are just some general ideas of what I'm looking for, Eric. But before I moved on it, I want wanted to see if the Board would support this and if they thought there was any value to this.
So, Charles?
I I don't think it's our jurisdiction. That's just my opinion. I don't think the Board, the Select Board is really, I mean, I personally am this this really borders on on several different things. One of them is freedom of speech, which I don't really want to get into, but I know also there's other boards and committees that do deal with signage, for instance, anything that is on town owned property, especially on the common is is under the jurisdiction of, for instance, I know the the Historic District Commission is basically in charge of any signage that supposedly goes on on any historic property. It so it's not just the Board of Selectmen. I believe that this would be more of a zoning or planning. I would say a planning. Who writes a bylaw for for something?
Well, I I guess my first question was, is it a general bylaw or a zoning bylaw?
Right.
I see it as a general bylaw, not a zoning bylaw. And then the the second thing is, you mentioned freedom of speech. I don't think this is regulating what is on the sign. It's regulating the size of the sign and I thought I saw a thing about amount of time, temporary. They must be temporary in nature.
So yeah, if you have to read the sign. Right, if you have to read the sign to see if it's in compliance, then then that that would be against freedom of speech. So I'm not looking for anything that has anything to do with what is on the sign. All I'm just saying is that the size of the signs should be, and I don't know how big that should be, but I'm saying the size of the shot sign because every year they, you know, we're seeing these signage getting bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger.
Yeah.
So I'm I'm not opposed to this because it doesn't have words, you know, it's it's the size of the sign. And I think that I'm going to ask you a question in a minute, Eric, because I have a question about it. But I think that if we were to go with this, we should put something in there that state this is outside of historic history. It's not, this is signage that's not within, you know.
Well, that's why I said I I want to kind of direct Eric to like, what is the right way? Should we give this these ideas to the zoning board or planning board, whatever? Can we write something up and then, you know, ask the zoning board? I I, you know, I understand your concern, Chad, so that's why I just but I didn't want to do any of that if if I didn't, you know, I didn't think the Board saw a need to control the size of the signs. So and that's all I'm talking about.
Right, so as far as election signs are concerned, I know there's very, there's very strict laws.
Well, we can't.
While there's, there is, we have bylaws that that talk about how long they can be up, that kind of stuff. As far as our
Sorry. Boy.
Chaz, it looked like you were telling a ghost story there for a minute. The camera was
That was the prequel to the haunted happenings that will be happening at the Townsend Library. But we'll talk about that later with a guest with a guest tour guide.
Well, is this go ahead, Chaz, or is this a good time to go to Eric and have him talk about general bylaw versus zoning bylaw?
Yeah, and so I think that the the first thing we need to do is try to make a determination as to how the town currently regulates signage, whether it's regulated all under the zoning bylaw, is it under the zoning bylaw and a general bylaw, or is it all under a general bylaw? Because it's tough to switch horses midstream, right? If we're if every other piece of signage is in zoning, it would be hard to draft a general bylaw when every other signage bylaw is a zoning bylaw. So that would be the first determination that you would have to make. That's relatively easy to do. The the Delicate Balancing Act that I think all of the members of the Select Board are are concerned about is challenging because you don't want to implicate First Amendment issues and and when you talk about anything about content of the sign, you're talking about a First Amendment issue because you have to read it. So that being said, I I I do think it's possible to do some research, if the Board wishes, into what the town can legally regulate about signs. And maybe if we have that information and the Board knows that they can regulate the size of a sign over, but you know, there's certainly case law in Massachusetts that talks about these these issues. And so it would be relatively, I think, easy to determine what our jurisdiction as a town would be to to do. And maybe that's the first step would be to come back and and tell the Board, this is what we can and can't do, and this is how we need to do it because this is how the town is regulating signage. And then the Board can maybe, with that information, then make a determination about whether you want to go forward and actually propose a bylaw or make a recommendation to the planning board that, you know, we we think that this is an area of concern. I will say that as a member, you know, the the Town Administrator's Office has received multiple calls about this exact issue at the time that I've been here. So I do know that the public is concerned about it. And and so I I think it's probably a timely thing to do a little research on.
So Teresa, where would you like to go with this?
I think, as Eric said, I think if he can do a little bit more research and come back to us and and advise us on the proper next steps. As long as you're in agreement with that, and that's fine with me. Do we need a motion to direct Eric to look into this or?
I I would entertain a motion. I don't know if we need to. What do you think, Eric? Do we need a motion?
You, I don't think you need it. I don't think you need a motion to direct me to just do some research and come back and provide that information is that we could just do it by, you know, is that that's the wish of the Board and everyone's comfortable with that, then I can do that and 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 prepare a report and come back to the board with it.
There's other press, more pressing issues for us to devote our time to, but I'm not adverse to it.
Okay, so then I I think by consensus, we, I know Teresa is, she's the one that brought it forward. I'm for it. And Chaz is what Chaz said.
Chaz is, no, it's not one of those little things that keep
There are a lot of pressing issues, but I I have gotten a lot of complaints about signage.
I've gotten more complaints about the roads than the signs.
Okay.
That's my point.
Well, the roads are what the roads are, so they don't have grants for those, so anyway. Yeah. So yes, when you get a free moment, that would be good.
I will, I will put that on the list.
Thank you. All right. I want to share my screen right now, you guys. This is going back to the thing beforehand. On Saturdays, please come to the opening celebration for Phase Two, Saturday, September twenty fourth at noon. It also gives me the rap for the if the celebration is behind Harbor Auto at ninety eight Main Street, parking and the shuttle is available. Cherry Hill Ice Cream at fifty three Main Street. See the map below for details. So the parking is at Cherry Hill Two. That's where you park and the shuttle will run there for Autobuy and back. Oh, if you are interested in taking the shuttle that we just approved, it does not come from the Hawthorne Brook area. It comes from Cherry Hill Two. So erase everything that I said before and just look at this. And there's also a donated work fundraising. So this is something that we really should get out there somehow. I'm sure it's on the Swan Lake Greenways Facebook page, probably their website. And so we'll see if we can't get this up on some of the other Facebook pages that some people are aware.
Thank you.
But that's the shuttle map right there. So any questions about this? All right, so see you all there at noon on Saturday and hopefully get there a little early for the, if you're taking the show. All right. All right, moving on, Town Administrator Updates and Reports. So Eric, this is you. I need you to unmute. There we go.
Thank you. So I I have a couple of reports as as folks can see, I am zooming and not in the office. So I'm going to be a little bit more more brief than I had planned. So there's the the first thing I wanted to let folks know is that the Building Department is ready to roll out online permitting. It's all, it's all set up and the all the the I know that when the Building Commissioner had come to the Board of Selectmen earlier, he had indicated the plan, which was to charge a ten dollar fee for online permitting on top of the regular building permit fee. And that is the, that is the only cost to the town for this online permitting service is that ten dollar surcharge per permanent application. So I I just as a as a I I'm not, I'm not, I didn't, I didn't know exactly whether or not the Board had officially authorized that extra ten dollar fee. So if the Board, if it's the wish of the Select Board, I would request a vote authorizing the Building Department to charge a ten dollar service fee for the online permitting to be added on to the regular Building Department fees so that we can get this started.
All right, so is there a motion? You're muted, Teresa. I can see your lips going.
Still muted, Teresa.
I'm sorry, is the motion to add the ten dollar fee?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we add add a ten dollar fee for building, on supportive building on permit, online applications.
Second that.
All right. Further discussion. Is that on all permits? Is this fee going on all permits, Eric, or only those that are applied online?
Only those that are applied online.
Okay, and as Barbara Funding, we had put funds aside for kiosks outside of the Building Department and the Planning Department. Are those in process?
I'll have to check with the with the Building Commissioner about the process for that and where we stand. I'll get that back to the Board.
And there was also a printer involved. Down in the, yeah, so check on all that. It's
Yeah, I know. I know that there's some hardware issues that we're that the there's still that are still in process. We don't have the hardware here, but the online permitting can still start without without the hardware being installed. I think that's where we're ready to roll with that.
And is that on the, going to be on the Building Department webpage then? How do people know that?
Well, I think it will be on the Building Department webpage, but I'm hopeful that we can put a link to it on the front of the town's webpage so that it just says online permitting and they can click there and go right in without having to dig.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion? All right, Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa Amos, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Teller, yes. All right, Eric.
The second thing that I want to discuss with the Board was authorizing the posting for a land use coordinator, unfortunately. As I mentioned earlier, because we are going to lose Mike, hopefully he'll he will, if if we if we get lucky and we hold off the federal government for a couple of weeks, we'll have him until the second half of October. And so if we can get a posting going, you know, sometime this week, that means the posting will close and I can even have Mike help me do interviews, which would be great while he was still here. So that would be my request is to authorize the posting for the for the ladies coordinator position.
Do you have the posting that we did before? Should I forward that to you? I'm the one that wrote the post. Um, should I forward that to you? I'm the one that wrote the posting.
If you would be willing to forward that to me, that would be lovely.
Okay, um, I will send those to you. Um, it, it was a posting and the job description.
Right.
Okay, awesome. Alright, so um, uh, do we need a vote for that? Can we just do consensus?
I think it, it's in the budget, so I think with just a consensus, and as long as the board's okay with that, we can do that.
Okay.
I'm okay with it.
I'm okay.
I'm okay with that, too. So I will, um, I will get those to you. Alright, anything else, Sarah?
Uh, I think that's gonna be it for tonight. I, I will have a more robust um, report when next we meet. Hopefully we'll be, I'll be in person at that point.
Okay. Um, reports from boys liaisons. Are there any? Teresa, starting with you. You're the appointed boards, anything? Unmute, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, again.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I have nothing. It looks like I missed a meeting, but no, I have nothing.
Okay, um, Jazz?
Um, no, I missed a meeting last night of the water department. I did try to listen to it, though. Um, I have some things that come up. Couldn't avoid, um, in regards to that. Um, I do know that um, Beth had asked me to post or to announce, and I forgot what she asked me to announce.
We have vacancies on the planning board and zone board this time.
Yes.
We'd love people to get involved.
Yeah, so planning and, and the zoning board have vacancies. We're looking for volunteer response forms. Um, I'm hearing that the land use um, coordinator has flyers that he wants to send out.
On the door.
Nice. Um, so we, we really do uh, need uh, some volunteers for that. I think that would be great. Um, the second.
Those are the associate positions, aren't they?
Uh, there are different positions on different boards.
Okay.
Right, combination of, yes.
Alright.
Yeah. Um, also, as we alluded to earlier, on Townsend Haunted Trail, it's coming up. That will be Saturday, October eighth. Uh, from seven to nine at the woods at the Townsend Library, um, at the uh, I just wanna say that last year was a phenomenal turnout. Um, there is a hayride, popcorn, um, magicians. Uh, the admission is eight dollars, seven dollars with a canned good, and it is, it benefits the friends of the Townsend Public Library. Um, I just wanna say that last year was so phenomenal that this year I said, yes, I would volunteer and, and help out. Um, the, you, you would think that it was the youngsters that had a good time, but I think the oldsters were the ones that had the best time watching uh, the shenanigans of everyone. But uh, again, on Saturday, October eighth, from seven to nine, if you're not doing anything, definitely come out. Support the library, number one. Number two is just support the community. Uh, it was really nice to, to be able to see the amount of people. We were supposed to end it at nine o'clock, and I don't think I got home until eleven, because there was so many people that showed up. Um, and that's all I have for liaisons.
Okay, um, I don't really have anything. Uh, the only thing I'll say is that there, there will be postings coming out for uh, fire positions that have been, that will touch it.
Right.
So, um, that's it. I don't have anything else under public safety. Uh, announcements and communications. Alright, with this I need to, um, I wanna first say there's, was a press release that we got today. It's not in the SharePoint, but you might have gotten it. Uh, there is a job fair, the um, Work North Central Hiring Event, scheduled for Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, from ten AM to one PM at One Chusset Mountain Ski Area in Princeton. Uh, regional organizations involved include Fitchburg State, the Mass Hire North Central Massachusetts Career Center, the Mass Hire North Central Massachusetts Workforce Investment Board, and that One Chusset Community College. Um, it is free of charge to attend and open to the public. But there's that one. Uh, there were two others, that one. That's the job fair. I've already talked about Trucker Palooza. Um,
It was a notice of a public hearing for the town of Pepperell to go over their um, forty R Smart Growth Overlay District as well, which is, I know they, they still um, doing their um, hybrid meetings, so there, you can see it. I believe it is being reported, no kind. Um, but that's a good, uh, if anybody's interested in that, I know that the uh, housing authority will be watching in in regards to that, because that gives, it'll give us an idea of how the town process works.
Alright, and at this point, I think I'm gonna share my screen just very quickly, um, because I have the ones that were um, SharePoint. Okay, um, this is a notice of, of filing. This is for uh, UnitO for approval of its twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one three-year energy efficiency plan term report. Just so. Um, and then the same for uh, gas, I believe it is. Um, so one for electric, one for gas. So that's just approval of their term um, report, and there is a similar one for that. Um, if anybody's interested on Thursday, October twenty-seven. Uh, Comcast business is increasing their rates. So if you're a, have a Comcast business account, you will see updated rates. Um, it's not residential. Uh, resignation of Mike Borosko from the Townsend Housing Authority um, trust fund. Um.
Affordable housing trust.
That's what it should read, but it says Townsend Housing Authority Trust Fund. So it's the Townsend Affordable Housing Trust. Um, is that what he said? Housing Authority Trust Fund. Um, so anyway, uh, so there will be an opening there that we need to post for. So um, I don't think the Affordable Housing Trust is meeting until early October, maybe the third, uh, or the fourth. So, um, so we'll get a posting together for that. Um, and then the uh, UnitO, this is the regional meeting, right? Um, the annual meeting. Uh, so if you're interested in attending that, that is meeting in person. It's held at the Great Wolf Lodge in Fis- Fitchburg from seven thirty to uh, nine AM on October eighteen, and uh, an RSDP is required. So, that is all we have for the announcements. So they have anything else? Alright then, our next meeting um, is October fourth at six PM. That's our next regular meeting. I wanted to set dates for October, November, December, because we have um, you know, um, Thanksgiving and Christmas and holiday season coming up. So, um, right now, I'm looking at the first and the third for regular meetings. So it's October fourth and October eighteen at six PM. November first and November fifteenth at six PM. And then December sixth and December twentieth at six PM. And I know we also have to have a special town meeting, so Eric, do you wanna talk about that a little bit?
Yes, and so, um, it's looking like the special town meeting is in all likelihood gonna need to be in December, um, as it was last year, to make sure that we have our certified free cash before the meeting. Um, and I, I, I honestly do not wanna push it too far back into December. Just because, you know, the closer it gets to the holidays, I think the bigger burden it is for folks. Um, so there are two possibilities that I would suggest to the board. The first is that um, we, there's a, a board meeting scheduled for the sixth of December. Um, that instead of having it on the sixth of December, we have it on the twenty-ninth of November. Um, and schedule the, uh, tentatively do the, the, the special town meeting on the sixth, or we can just schedule the special town meeting for the thirteenth, and maintain the exi- the, the pre-existing uh, select board schedule.
Let's say the sixth.
Special town meeting on the sixth?
Yeah.
And then do a regular meeting on the twenty-nine? Teresa? What do you think? Does that meet your schedule? Need you to unmute.
I think Teresa's busy.
Okay, alright, never mind. Um, I'm new illiterate. I don't know why I'm like triple muted. Uh, that's, that's okay, uh, with my schedule. Um, matter of fact, it actually works out well with my schedule. I, I sent Eric, I, I'll be going uh, a good portion of November uh, to the Galapagos Islands, so I won't have.
Very exciting. Um, so I, I would like to write that in pencil, if that's possible, so that I can check with the clerk's office and with um, with the moderator, and make sure that that date also works for them. Um, and then I can report back to the board at the next, uh, at the next meeting to set it in stone, if that, that's okay.
Um, what about also checking with the assessors? Because doesn't this have something to do with setting the tax rate? Um, didn't?
I will do that, too, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So. So the pencil in is the twenty-ninth at six PM for Board of Selectmen, and the December sixth for special town meeting.
And I will, like I said, I will triple check and get back to the board next time, once I talk to the interested parties.
Alright, uh, that sounds good. Alright, um, next thing is a uh, motion to review and sign payroll and bills payable warrants out of session. Or in session is the case may be.
Yeah, right, it's right there, so you might as well do that.
So, um, but next week's would be out of session, so. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we review and sign payroll out of session. And does that mean I need to come in tomorrow morning to sign them?
To Serena, I got that, because.
Okay.
If you can authorize the, you know, Hannah.
Two signatures, you and I are here.
Oh, we're here. So yeah, we're here. So no, Teresa, you don't have to come in unless you want to. We have to, right here. We're all good to go. For this week, next week, a different story. So, um, but yes, that means you do not have to come in tomorrow. We're all set. So Teresa made the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Um, all those in favor, Teresa?
Teresa A. Morris, yes.
A Texan Iranian, yes.
And Veronica Kelly. Okay, and with that, um, the regular meeting is complete. Um, we do have an executive session, brief executive session. Um, and uh, we will adjourn from there. So is there a motion? Teresa, do you want Jazz to make the motion?
Yes, that would help. Thank you, Jazz.
Um, Madam Chair, I move that we um, adjourn the regular meeting and enter into executive session pursuant to General Law Chapter thirty A, uh, Section twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, and that would be the police chief.
And I will second that. Um, and did you say and adjourn from?
And adjourn to, in, in.
From executive.
From executive session, yes.
Okay, um, Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Morris, yes.
Iranian, yes.
And Veronica Kelly, yes. Alright, so uh, good night, anyone that's left on the meeting. Um, if you could all leave, that would be great, and.
Do you want me to temporarily leave and then come back in?
No, I think you're good, right there, Teresa. We just need um, Andrea and Hartley to leave the meeting. I believe I'm the co-host already. So, um, and we need Hartley to turn off channel one. And then I think the boom. So we'll get that taken care of, and we're all good.